Nicole.
Hi Omar.
How's everything?
It's good, how are you?
Good evening, welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting for April 26, 2021. All councilor and participants is gathering remote via Zoom. Application meeting due to a COVID pandemic of the result of the executive order by Governor Baker on March 12, 2020. Allow us to do so. I wanna keep admitting people. I will take a motion to approve the minutes. The Council of Rothschild sent today from December 1st, October 6th, and September 1st, 2020.
So moved.
There was, there were three, right?
Yeah, three of them, December 1st, October 6th, and September 1st.
Yeah, okay, second.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? See, a non, Councilor Derby?
Aye.
Councilor Rothschild?
Aye.
And I vote yes, so. Motion passed. Public speak time. Is anyone here that wanna say something that is not related to the agenda? Now, now is the time to talk. That is not related to agenda. Before that, let me set up a few rules. I expect everybody be respectful tonight. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be. I'm gonna be flexible in this meeting, I'm gonna let people to talk. Usually, the meeting is closest to the council because this is not a public hearing. But I wanna be flexible, I wanna listen to the public, I wanna listen to the police department. And I wanna listen to everybody. If you wanna talk, please use the reaction, right hand, right, right, right hand. So that way I can see it and way into, I recognize you to talk. After saying that, is anyone here to talk that is not related to anything in their agenda? James?
Thank you so much, counselor, I really appreciate you. Is there a time limit for a public address? I'll try to keep my comments brief.
I will give you three minutes.
Oh wow, that's very generous, I won't use it all. So I am here on behalf of Bay Stateers for Natural Medicine, which is a advocacy group that has worked with Tapestry and other organizations around the state to de-prioritize law enforcement of all substance possession charges as, and allowing residents to grow and cultivate psychedelic plants for their mental health care. We've worked with the Somerville City Council, the Cambridge City Council, and the North Hampton City Council with support both from community groups that take issue with policing, as well as many police officers around the state who do not believe the war on drugs is a war worth fighting anymore. There are six countries and five other major cities beyond Massachusetts that have de-prioritized enforcement in favor of treating drugs like a public health issue. I'll just say that having a cousin who suffers from heroin addiction, jail does not help him with that addiction. Going to jail means he loses his job, he gets a permanent record that makes it harder for him to gain opportunities in the future, and it re-traumatizes him. And these are all things that make substance abuse disorder even worse. What I'll say about psychedelic plants as a, as a positive means forward for our communities is a study of 25,000 people found that psychedelic plant therapies reduce recidivism. For, for folks on the call that don't know what recidivism means, that means, you know, the, the phenomenon of going back to jail after, shortly after being released. I'll say a 2020 study by Johns Hopkins found that psychedelic plants are four times more effective than conventional medication at treating major depression. Similarly, two studies in the Journal of Drug and Alcohol Abuse found that just using psychedelics one time in a therapeutic setting is associated with a 40% reduced risk of opioid abuse as well. An African plant known as Ibogaine, which we're hoping to roll out in Somerville and other communities with harm reduction organizations, helps people overcome withdrawal symptoms and, in the process, get their lives together and get them on a better track away from addiction. So, you know, Tapestry endorsed us because we see the opioid epidemic ravaging our communities across Massachusetts. Like me, they believe that these psychedelic plants should be accessible for adults to use. They're non-addictive, impossible to overdose on, and we can educate our community on the best ways to use these plants in, in controlled settings. There's a lot of debate that you all will have tonight on the role, on the proper role of law enforcement in our communities. And it's clear to us that incarceration, jail are not the best alternatives for treating substance abuse disorder. And that a lot of adults are responsible using these plants, like in North Hampton, for their own spiritual and psychological fulfillment. So with that, I'll, I'll end my comments and, and thank you all for your time.
James, could I have your address for the record?
Uh, yes, so my address is 14 Ward Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, James, I just wanna let you know about the rules. Because what you're talking is no part of the agenda, we are not allowed to deliberate. So that's why we are not gonna make you any question or, or comments about it. But if you wanna talk to us a little bit more about that with us, you can contact me at 413-977-2676 or send emails and we'll be in contact with you, okay?
Thank you.
Yep, Shelby?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, I'm also with Bay Stateers and I live in East Hampton. I'm at 14 Ward of Precinct 4. I just wanted to also voice my support for Bay Stateers and everything that James has brought forward. I also wanted to give a little bit of personal experience and information to the council when considering these things and evaluating public safety. I had a traumatic brain injury when I was seven years old and I have a lot of neurologic problems from that, as well as significant depression from early childhood because of that. And in my first year of college, I was able to try psychedelics for the first time and I was able to come off of long-term antidepressant medication, which was causing me significant health issues. And also wasn't really alleviating my symptoms of depression or suicidal tendencies. And I was able to come off of those medications without continuing use of psychedelics. You know, really after that one incident, I was able to move away from those drugs that were actually causing me a lot of complications with some of my neurologic issues. And I also wanna say that I think that this is important because it, again, is another way that we can reduce the scope of policing in the community, which is obviously a public safety issue, especially for people of color, black people, especially. The statistics just really say that they're targeted the most in these possession charges. And I think now's an important time to discuss those things. That's I have to say, thanks.
Thank you Shelby. Lisa, you want? She said the address, right?
She did.
Myra?
Hey, my name is Myra, I'm a resident of East Hampton and I live in Precinct 1. I just have a clarifying question for you, Counselor Gomez, and I wanted. I just wanted to know if there is additional time after item, agenda item three, new business? If there is comment being taken at that time?
Yes, I, like I said previously, I'm gonna be flexible in this meeting. I'm gonna let the public to talk, including the police department, about the report. That's the idea of this meeting. The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, no one else from Public Speak Time? Seeing none, gonna move to the agenda. But first, I'm gonna, for respect, I'm gonna let the mayor to, to talk first. Because basically, this is her report. And I don't wanna, I wanna hear about what you think about this.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Derby, Counselor Rothschild, and members of the, the public and public employees who are here. So, thank you very much for the, to the city council for accepting the report for more public review. I took the pledge back in June 3rd, 2020. And I worked through the process to the best of our ability. We hit some pretty major blocks around data and around the format of, of the group. I cannot commend and thank Nicole, Professor Nicole Hendricks, who's on this call for coming in somewhat after the process started, to pull together the mayor work group and ultimately produce this, this report. That was the charge, to, to produce a report along a general guideline as put out by my brother's keeper related to the Obama Foundation. The report, I think, is very comprehensive, I think it shows where we have immediate work to do. The data comes to mind instantly and, and we've begun steps towards that. But, you know, the majority of my gratitude to tonight and the other meetings is just that there's more opportunity for public comment and that Counselor Gomez restructured his meeting to accommodate this report. It will be hard to take the recommendations as they are now and an action plan and funding plan. So this really is, is a very important set of meetings for me around mayor's pledge, what community is, the community trust, and, and where we go, go from here. So I'm, my ears are wide open and, and also I look forward to the work that the sub-community will do and then present back to the, the city council when, when they're ready and, and again, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is any question from the counselors to the mayor? No, so now I wanna give the opportunity to Nicole Hendrick, that she, she was in charge, basically, about the group, I was part of the group, we have some member of the group here too. I just wanna let Nicole Hendrick to tell us a little bit about the work that she was doing and about, a little bit about the report. I just wanna be clear with everybody, our plans, my plans is to have multiples meetings about this topic. Just wanna start with the first recommendation and digest the first recommendation and talk about, about that first. And then keep moving in all the meetings about the other recommendations, but basically that's what I want. I don't know if any Council Derby or Council Rothschild have any question about that. But if not, I would just wanna go to Nicole Hendrick.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, thank you, Mayor LaChapelle, Counselors Rothschild, Derby, and members of the public. The first thing I'd like to say is just thank you to all of the people, some of whom are in this meeting, who were part of this initial work group. The mayor appointed seven members from the public, it's clearly delineated in the final report. And we began by looking at the charge. And I, I just wanna sort of focus our attention in on the initial charge to the group, which was a rather narrow charge in terms of the areas that we were to examine. So the initial charge was, through rigorous and holistic outreach, the work group will review the East Hampton Police Department's use of force policies and offer recommendations for reforms in a final report to be submitted to the mayor. Essentially, when we began the work, we were really closely honed in on use of force alone. And we looked at the use of force policy simultaneously. Many of you know that the state of Massachusetts passed a new, or was in the midst of passing new legislation, which also addressed use of force. So, some of what occurred in this group was that by the time we got to the middle of this effort, the, the police reform bill passed and many of the things that we addressed in this initial review of the use of force policy were answered in, in the state bill. That's not to say that the state bill covered all of the things that sort of came up through the course of our conversations. But narrowly, when we talk about use of force, there were some similarities in the recommendations that this group was coming to. So that's sort of part one. At, at a stage during the beginning of this work, the group, it became, you know, sort of obvious that there needed to be a much deeper look at existing data, aside from the administrative reports that were available on the police website and some of the, you know, limited pieces of data that we were able to, to get. Though, you know, at many times, the police department was working with us to, to try to get us the requests. There was a lot of confusion, but I would say, kind of figuring out how their systems would allow for extracting the kinds of information that this group would need. So, the group sort of took a pause and I conducted a survey of police officers. So, I administered and then analyzed a survey of police officers. We had a very large response rate. And we also looked at police administrative data and I submitted an initial draft assessment. The group reconvened in January after the initial assessment and several members chose not to continue or participate in the work group. And some of that has sort of been dissected in, in some media reports, but I would leave it up to folks to sort of speak their own truths about that sort of change in, in the makeup of the work group. We continued with the work, we, we set up several community listening sessions. We contacted folks through a community survey of community-based organizations. And we also, you know, had some other access points for community members to get in touch with us through feedback forms. And I think the report is, is very honest about the limitations. And that is one of the biggest limitations of this, of this piece of work is the level of community engagement that we were able to elicit over the course of these six months. And so what you read is a result of the data that we have received, the data that we were able to collect, our conversations, our, our extensive research and thoughtfulness around this question of community safety. And it did expand quite a bit from just looking at use of force to looking at, you know, sort of community safety writ large in East Hampton. So, I think that, that is a bit of a summary.
Thank you Nicole. Any question from Council Derby, Council Rothschild, to Nicole Hendrick?
Not at this time, thanks.
I guess no. I just wanna add the, thank you Nicole, I think that was a great resumen of, about, about the group. And, and, you know, it was so clear, we, we put a pause between the process for some reasons. And something that I was a little bit disappointed was about how many people was part of the sessioning group, listening sessioning group, was that many, wasn't that many people as, as I want? And, and I think this is the good, this is the idea and I'll bring it to the public safety and, and keep listening to the public about the report, about what they think about the report. So I, I think this is great. We have Rebecca from the, from the group, I don't know, I don't know if she wanna say something before I, I open it to more conversation about the, the report, anything that you wanna add Rebecca? I didn't see anyone else from the group, so.
Well, um, right, well, thank you. I really appreciate what both of you have already said and that I, I'm one of the people that appreciate Professor Hendrick's work on this. And I was pleased to have the chance to work together and identify concerns and am just hopeful that we'll keep moving on this and get more input and improve the results.
Thank you Rebecca.
Thank you for everybody who cooperated and participated.
Thank you. Before we keep talking about the report, I just wanna mention a few things about what happened during our meetings. And there was a reform came from the state level. And that reform include creation of a new commission and mandatory statewide certification process for the police officers, including a division that will primarily investigate and adjudicate complaints of, of officer misconduct. I think that, that's one of the biggest one. They, they include in that reform, public disclosure of public misconduct records, and affirmative right to bias free plus policing, creation of eight permanent commissions, including commissions to study the status of African-American, Latinx people, those with the same disabilities and black men and boys. Elimination of the state mandate for every school district to have an SRO. That with reforms, now they give the authority to the school committee to, to decide if they wanna or not. After that, we can start with the process, I hope, and I wish, the counselor read the, the report. You guys have any question now or not yet? No, so I'm going for the recommendation number one from the report because the introduction was pretty clear from both Nicole's, Nicole's, the mayor and Nicole Hendrick. I think the introduction was perfect, that was from, basically from the report too. Before letting the public to, to speak, I just wanna read a little bit about the first recommendation. Basically, the recommendation is invest in a community-led, non-police response to health and safety concerns. That the first one. I don't know if, before we start, we wanna hear a little bit about this from Nicole Hendrick, that she's here. That way we can have a clear mind when we start talking about it. You wanna say something about the first recommendation Nicole?
Sure, so the first recommendation comes from the responses to both, you know, the surveys that we conducted, the listening sessions, and also from police department feedback that looked at responding to harms in the community in different ways, especially when it comes to mental health crises. There was, you know, some agreement. Only one of the 13 surveyed community organizations felt that the EPD should be solely responsible for mental health responses. And we also noted a lot in terms of interpersonal violence. We felt that there is a great opportunity in East Hampton to work collaboratively or to engage, you know, existing community organizations in peer-to-peer responses to interpersonal violence. Notably, some of the comments were about, you know, training the community and bystander intervention and providing much more opportunities for different kind of response to those challenges.
Anything from the council that they wanna add?
I don't wanna add at this point, I'm not really sure what our structures, what you have in mind for the structure.
So, the idea of, of this is first is digesting the, the report from the group. And in conjunction, I wanna do, send a recommendation to the mayor about how we can implement these recommendations in our community, in our city. I don't wanna send something to the mayor that is gonna be only for a few months or for a year. I wanna recommend something to the mayor that we can have it in 10 years, 20 years. Something that we can keep working forever, something that will work in our community. And that, that's why we have this here today, that's we wanna hear from the police department, from, from the public or from everywhere. So that when we can, we can read, again, digest the, the report, evaluate the report and send recommendations to the mayor about how and what we should get in our community. So. Any other questions? No?
I mean, I'm sure you have questions, but I guess I wasn't sure if you wanted the public to speak.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm going there, I just wanna, I wanna know if the counselors wanna talk first, that's why.
I don't wanna talk first, I, I, this recommendation to me seems like something I've heard from all, all directions as well. In terms of conversations with law enforcement and with the public and just what we've seen as a trend across, across the country, that mental health solutions have been like kind of thrown in the police department's laps as they've defunded mental health over, since the Reagan years really. So I, I'm really curious as to, there was a group, the peer-to-peer group that's mentioned in here. I don't, I didn't even know that much about them, I'd like to know more about them and the work that they do in East Hampton. I'd also like to know from law enforcement officers that are here, like models that they've heard about in other communities. And what, what they think would be a great, good solution for our city in terms of how they work. I, and since I know that like state and national funding is limited in mental health, thinking about a community is a way that we can bring mental health as part of our public safety. So that's what I'm interested in and I'm interested in hearing both from community people that work in mental health and also from police officers in terms of the work that they do and models that they maybe have heard about from their colleagues in other, in other cities. What would be a good, good solution? So I'm, I'm just wanna kinda, I'm interested in hearing what people have to say.
Perfect, thank you, anything you wanna add, Council Derby?
I'm just here to listen.
Perfect, I know we have the police chief here and I think we have Officer Greby. I will take first the comment from the public and I will let you talk at the end, if that's okay with both. I think both are, I think I saw Officer Greby somewhere.
That's fine with me, counselor.
Okay, thank you chief. So now, anyone from the public that wanna talk about the first recommendation? Or about the report? We wanna listen to you guys, thank you, okay?
Um, Omar, I know the counselor, excuse me, Council Grim, as I know that there were a couple of other AK members that wanted to speak first, Javier and Gabby. there were a couple of other AK members that wanted to speak first Javier and Gabby. Would I be able to yield my time to them and then circle back? Would that be okay?
That would be okay. Angela?
Hey everyone. Um, I am trying to start my video, but no, it's not working. I am here with the data. I know, I apologize. It's, it's, uh, it's been a long day of meetings. The phones had it. Um, I'm here to support everything that James and Shelby said, but also kind of listening in on some of the concerns are apparent throughout the board with, you know, drug use and how we can, you know, prevent our communities from failing. And I, I think a big part of that is, is decriminalization and really holding, you know, holding accountable some changes to our community and, and bringing some light back into this situation. I think there's a lot of people that are just uneducated and on plant medicine that maybe just really just don't understand it. So we, we've put in a lot of time and resources together to get people involved. This past week, and I actually went through East Hampton and got to know your community a little bit. And it, it's just an amazing, beautiful community. And I support, you know, what you guys are doing and the missions that you are creating to structure your community. It's, it's very impactful. I'm, I'm an owner of a cannabis company that I'm starting out. It's Massachusetts Cannabis Company. And it's a female-owned, operated, funded service grown and manufactured. So we really like focused on social change. And when I got into the plant medicine world, it was because my husband, after six years, had passed away from cancer. So after a long two-year battle and a battle myself with Lyme disease that had went into my brain, and it caused a traumatic brain injury. So I was, I was really skeptical about plant medicine until I started doing a deeper dive and got some more research and education. And then I realized just like the crowd that it was impacting and how much more, more power we had, we stuck together and really just had a voice for this. I studied as a caretaker, you know, watching somebody heal from this. But also, you know, survivor of my, my own medical issue and post-traumatic stress disorder. I found it just, it's just so impactful in my development and my progress as a human being. I mean, it, when I, when I got in the group of these people and realized how much people were avoiding crime simply by just choosing different options, it was, it was really impactful. And just to have a voice in the community and really stick up for what you believe in. But what you guys are doing is really great. And I, I think that you have an awesome thing going on, just super supportive community. So just keep doing what you're doing. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Angela. Javier?
Thank you so much, Counselor Gomez. My name is Javier Luengo. I'm, I work for the American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts. I'm in charge of campaigns and I work with elected officials in local governments in all Western Mass. I'm also, I also, I'm also a part of the Northampton Policing Review Commission that released a month ago, their findings to the Northampton Mayor and also the Northampton City Council after almost eight months of work. And first, first of all, I, I want to be really appreciative of the elected officials in the city of East Hampton. The fact that they are sort of adding their voices and adding their actions to a national movement, which is the divest and reinvest in finding new ways to be able to address community issues and turning things where, you know, our, our budgets as a, as a community should be a reflection of who we are and our values. And, and that's, that's extremely important. In relationship to, to the, to the recommendation that it's been talked about today, which is investing community-led non-police response to health and safety concerns. I was also the co-chair of the Alternatives to Policing of the Northampton Police Review Commission, and I was the chair of the outreach SOC committee. And this is a complicated job to try to get the voices of those that the system is not working and bring them forward. And even more because, you know, Northampton, East Hampton and other towns around Western Mass, they don't have the numbers that Boston would have, that Rochester, New York would have, that New, that New York City would have. So the problem, the problem is that when you have affected communities, that they have a houseless, unhoused population or affected communities that they have in close interaction with local enforcement. It's really difficult for them to come forward because at the end of the day, no matter incidents, it weighs more, it's a small sample compared with a bigger city, which doesn't make it better, but it's complicated because it's easier for anybody to track down that testimony back to who was giving that testimony. So that makes things really hard for any kind of commission or any kind of working group to be able to get the testimonies of those that the words, the word safety doesn't necessarily mean the same. And that's something that we need to be cognizant of it. A feeling safe, it's, it's a really loaded question. There are things that people would make safe and others would feel unsafe, right? As a person of color, as an immigrant, I, I personally feel extremely nervous and unsafe when I'm being, when I'm stopped by a police officer. And that's, and that's my experience. Other people, they, they wouldn't experience that. So we have to be cognizant that an added layer and problem of this is that we do not share the same vocabulary and the same perception of the words that we're using. So the word safety is a loaded word. One of the key points in, in, in getting results for these kind of commissions is, is the data that you get. The Northampton Police Review Commission heard hundreds, if not almost more than a thousand testimonies during three public hearings where people was able just to give testimonies. Each of those lasted at least three, three to five hours plus seven months of meetings of different commissions in the full review commission. And, and was complicated because the recommendation at the end, it's, it was a declaration of the, of a community department. And that's really important because I think when, 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 when you're talking about as a recommendation to invest in community-led and non-police responses to health and safety concerns, because you want to be able to offer a service that eventually is going to have to be 24/7. You want to be able to get it fully founded, but only fully operational in it's, 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 at the end of the day, it's going to be an office of a department that is not, that cannot depend on a side, on a grand cycle. We're lucky that Representative Sabadosa has entered a bill, this legislative session, where if that deal passes eventually would be able, cities and towns in Massachusetts would be able to access funding for alternative to policing in relation to mental health and, and other issues. But right now, when we're talking about creating alternative to policing in situations where the community says in identified situation that they don't want somebody with a gun. In this case specifically, I heard there's been talk about mental health related issues. We can also talk about wellness check and others. It's, it's essential that those services are fully funded and the city gets to a level that they can actually have those services come to 24/7. It comes to mind the Kahoots model, which is Eugene, Oregon. Kahoots have been running for more than 30 years. Kahoots started not 24/7, but the goal was 24/7. And, you know, right now you have, you have all in Ithaca, you have in Rochester, you have in Toronto, programs that run like this. Because it's community-based, you also want to be able to offer a service that first covers liabilities. And that's in, in get, and people get the train and the level of expertise that you want them to have. Because you're going to be having, you're going to be sending people who are going to have to de-escalate situations. People that hopefully are peer-led and peer-led also involves that is, is non-coercive system. And on top of that, you want them to be able to, to, to offer a service that they want, the, the whole community can access. And, and that's a little complicated from the point of view that that's something that has to exist in the structure of the city. Because at the end of the day, you're divesting something that you are putting your finger in saying, this is, these are the things that we agree with the police department that they should not be doing and they don't want to be doing probably. And move them and you want, and, and that puts a lot of responsibility in the city having to have this, the level of service that needs to happen. Right? And the other thing is that one big problem that we saw in the Northampton Police Review Commission in relationship to service providers is that even people who were receiving services from service providers, I'm not going to name anybody here, but service providers across the valley were really hesitant to come forward to talk about their bad experiences with those service providers because they were fearful of losing the service that, that we're receiving. And that's, that's specifically speaks highly to the lack of accountability and feedback loop from those service providers. So just offering a, a, a system where service providers can keep doing what they are doing without accountability. It's, it's just perpetrating a pervasive system. You want to be able to create a system where whatever body you create answers to the people that it serves. And people are not fearful of coming forward if they are not getting the necessary help, if they are not getting the service that they need to get, they feel comfortable coming forward and stating that. Because if not, you're just, you know, perpetrating a system that doesn't really work. And that functions all for a new body within this, the city government, but also with service providers that they need to be accountable. The, we, you know, the true string did a, a great research article on relation to ServiceNet. The Northampton Police Review Commission got testimonies in relation, in relationship to CSO. So I would invite Chair Gomez and, and the other elected officials to take a look to the Northampton Police Review Commission and the material that we were able to gather because at the end of the day, the community is really small. And, and those services that ServiceNet, CSO and other organizations are giving right now are also being given to East Hampton residents. So it would be a good idea to take a look into that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Javier. Caroline?
Actually, can Gabby go next?
Sure.
Okay.
Go Gabby.
Hi, I'm Gabby Precinct Two, and I am speaking as a member of a kin. And I kind of just want to piggyback off of what Javier was saying about the need for common language. And this is actually something that we as a kind have been speaking a lot about, how, you know, there's always, you know, words like reinvest and divest and defunding and alternatives to policing are, are loaded words and people already have preconceived notions on them without maybe fully understanding what we mean when we say alternatives policing. So actually, a kind is hosting an event on Thursday, which is talking about this and could be a really good space for East Hampton to start developing this common language. Because I think it's really important if we are going to look into alternatives to policing and seeing what benefits the community is not only just understanding what the community needs and what the community is not only to feel safe, but also what makes sense for the city of East Hampton. It's, it's important to establish a foundational common language. And I think that's something that I missed from the report is that there were no definitions exactly what meant alternatives policing. And this event is going to be, you know, facilitated with panelists from Wildflower Alliance and Estoyaki. And they're going to be speaking about how these alternatives policing already exist and they work. And it's just demystifying really what it means and how it is possible to move towards a system that doesn't rely on the police and not just in regards to mental health, but other capacities. So I think that's something that we as a community should also be looking at is forming this common language. So we can all be starting off and speaking from the same perspective. And I yield the rest of my time. Thanks.
Gabby, can you say when the event is again?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes. It's called Peer Lead 101 and it is Thursday, April 29th at 7:00 PM. And if anyone's interested, you can just, it, the information's on our Facebook page or if you email us at a needs not enough at gmail.com. We'll be more than happy to provide the Zoom registration link.
Thank you, Gabby.
Thank you.
Caroline, you want to go now?
Sure. Here I come. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Carolyn Main Street, Ward Four, right? Salem, Salem was mine, I think, before. Yeah. Um, so I were four. Okay. This idea of common language and looking at this report and developing what, what do we really mean digging into things? I talking about investment here, that's my theme, because, you know, I agree with the broad statements of recommendation one, the need to invest in community-led responses to health and safety concerns. And I think Counsel Rothschild talked about this is not a new idea. But the, to get into investment, investment being the key to creating a well-resourced structure that can respond to the most appropriate ways to community needs and community needs in this time that we're in. And some specific examples in the report point to existing but chronically under-resourced community organizations as potential solution to issues of the police overextension into areas they're not best suited to address. And, you know, I see the East Hampton Community Center, for example, that's listed. And they've done amazing work in the pandemic meeting, the increased need for food. And there seem like they're working at capacity. You know, just to ask organizations to do something new, different. That's not always it. And kind of it's been a trend. There's constant offloading of necessary services from government to nonprofits. There's actually, you know, studies of this since the seventies, the eighties. It just, we, we cut governments, we move it to nonprofits and we give it less resources and then it cannot respond as effectively as, as we need. And it seems like we're in a moment of kind of re-examining that and seeing that government has a role to play. And if for my, I've 30-plus years of working life, I've worked mostly for nonprofits that are constantly asked to do more and more with less and less. There's a trainer, Kim Klein, she said someday we're going to be asked to do everything with nothing. So we don't want to keep going down that path that will not build the sturdy structure that we need. And, you know, just checking in with nonprofits there, we can't just be checking a box that, you know, they've been consulted and bringing them in. We need dedicated services provided by the city, by government to meet the mandate of the full need of this time. And then oversight that is transparent and accountable to the city's residents is also a necessity. Cause nonprofits, they're not accountable to the community. They have a board. Sometimes they're community members. Sometimes they're not. Sometimes they're representative of the community. Sometimes they're not. So and any, any plans that we adopt for entities, a mobile crisis resource, for example, or the mental health. We need to find ways for it to be accountable to this community and not just to be outsourced to an under-resourced nonprofit. And, you know, this is a slightly different example, but there's some pieces here that relate, you know, recently when community members reached out to a kind about problems with internet access for students and families and particularly accessing the free lunches. It kind of is a community group. We set up an ad hoc volunteer system and, you know, we had to have lots of people delivering food because we couldn't drive the vans. People could not, people who are not city employees could not drive the vans. And it was a liability. So we didn't have those resources. We couldn't be as efficient. But we, you know, there was a need and we set up the system and then it was adopted by city government to take it over because people recognized. by city government to take it over because people recognized how important this was. The, this system that had been set up by people, the BIPOC members of A Kind. Let's see here, okay. And thinking about this investment and how do we make it? It needs to begin immediately, begin now. We're also in this point where we're looking at our budget, the 2022 budget. And I have not weighed in through all the numbers, but I have been looking. And it's one number I've kind of pulled out, like I don't yet see the city government putting resources into this community-led response, you know? For example, I just look at the human resources, someplace it might live. You know, it's only 1.4% of the total budget and has a slight decrease, actually. And, um, you know, the idea of looking for like systemic change, like Counsel Gomez was talking about, like we need to set up something that's going to be lasting, start immediately, but think for the long term and be lasting. And this may necessitate just a change in the structure, the change in personnel and the way things are working. And it's not potentially with the police department and, you know, A Kind or other groups, you know, this national movement that Javier from Acelia talked about with these kinds of solutions, it's not, you know, and it's not necessarily that, you know, everyone is angry with the police or don't think the police can do anything. But the structure needs to change as is noted in this report. And right now, the nonprofit that I work at, statewide nonprofit, partly to do with the pandemic, change in leadership, we've had to, because of the pandemic, we had to cut fifteen, twenty percent of our staff, people had to take on more work. We totally restructured from our local nodes to our headquarters. And people had to do new work. And so like these times that we live in, we have changing needs as a city for safeties and the health and well-being of people post-pandemic. Calls for a change in the structures, which can be challenging to go through change. But the idea of like we have as a city, we're working toward a better, long-term system that will truly meet the safety and health needs of the community. So thank you so much for listening to that and all this work.
You got it, right? Natalie, I saw your hand before, I don't know if you want to talk or no?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Gomez. So my name is Natalie Gomez, Precinct Two. I am an A Kind BIPOC Caucus member. I'm also a member of the Ordinance Review Committee. I just want to make a point to discuss some overpolicing issues. Overpolicing of communities of color and low-income communities have been common occurrences across the nation. East Hampton Police is no exception. The EPD has clearly has a problem addressing questions, any questions about their tactics or authority, unless it's performance reasons to convince others that they're good guys. For example, this current social media post where they discuss the translation services. This good guy performance is just that, it's a performance. There's been a practice of community outreach under the guise of keeping the community safe by running car plates in affordable housing complexes in our city. This is a well-known fact and simply a way for the EPD to overpolice BIPOC and low-income, low-income communities. A practice that exposes the racist foundation of policing. Ultimately, as long as overpolicing continues without oversight or accountability, it becomes an issue. And it causes distrust with the community that they're trying so hard to connect with. With lack of cooperation, I'm just saying this, is lack of cooperation goes both ways. Unfortunately, the community can't trust anyone who does not want to cooperate with them. I think there's a lot of things that need to change. And there needs to be an ending to policing, period. Business as usual is no longer a thing. It's not going to be tolerated and shouldn't be tolerated, not just in our city, but nationwide, worldwide. These resources should be reallocated to actually helping our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Louise?
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry, you don't see me. All right, I'm on a new device and having tech problems.
Don't worry, but we can hear you.
Sorry, thanks. Okay, um, top of the good points, um, that point about community cannot trust and they can't cooperate that Natalie just made really struck a chord in me. Um, and I did want to raise a bit some of the harm that currently the structure is such that the EPD actually causes, especially to marginalized and underserved residents. East Hampton is known for the divide between newer residents and old timers who had created a supportive but an insular and homogenous culture. This city is not always welcoming to newcomers, especially if they're different in any way. And the example I'm going to use, I know it's got a lot of attention and may not strictly be under this remit, is the SROs. Because personally, I think that children are the most important. And when you get a conflict like this, it's the children who suffer first. Okay, last summer, there was a public speak to the school committee talking about the negative aspects of having an SRO, especially assigned to the school building. At the end, the committee voted in favor of the mayor's proposal to seek a waiver. The next meeting, the committee invited two SROs and Chief Alberti to their meeting. They gave a lengthy presentation and they also had a dialogue with the committee, pointing out BIPOC parents, BIPOC families never had that opportunity with the committee. Again, I know that's the school committee, that's not you, but in a perception by residents, it's all government, it feels like the same. I would point out, next step, as some people here know, the waiver is not a problem any longer because the SRO mandate was moved by Beacon Hill in January. But meanwhile, our kids still live under the threat, starting in fifth grade now, with the reopening of facing a cop every time they go to school. So what's the problem? I realize a lot of East Hampton's traditional population finds agrees that outsiders are threatening. They find the presence of a cop, of a police officer reassuring. I would say that their children's, well, okay, I'll leave that. First danger would be the school-to-prison pipeline. It has been claimed that East Hampton is a kind of special, very good place where that doesn't happen. But a reminder, three boys were arrested at EHS, three teenagers. You know what that does to them. The second problem, I mean, my personal feeling is that if there were real concern among the EPD about working with the community, that Chief Alberti would remove the SROs or at least withdraw them. He would show some flexibility and this would be a kind of signal of a starting point. As that hasn't happened, I was not at that second school meeting, I wasn't in the audience, but I watched it later. And it was anybody who's got BIPOC kids and worse, I mean, only speaking, anybody who's got BIPOC kids in their family. It was really hard to watch. The ignorance, the lack of understanding, the lack of education of the police, of awareness surprised me. One example is when the SRO was asked why BIPOC kids might be uncomfortable with an SRO in the school. And he suggested things like too much television or that their parents or family had previous negative experiences with police. Going back to common language, I honestly did not know what he was talking about. We're not speaking a common language. To me, a negative experience, as a white person, a negative experience with the police, because I have friends who've been through it, is GW driving wall block. Where I come from, that's a big thing, especially on the New Jersey Turnpike. It's all the murders that have happened recently. But even on a lower level, it's traffic stops. It's also the kind of thing that even if you accept, and I'm not sure of it, that a traffic stop is going to be non-prejudicial within East Hampton. If you want to convince kids just to look at the police as their friends, as officer-friendly, what happens when one of our kids gets in a car and drives to Springfield? Or drives to, okay, in better times and non-COVID times and maybe the after times? Or drives to Boston? And they've been taught this and they're an officer-friendly says, let's see your license, and the kid doesn't even think and reaches for his pocket or reaches for the glove compartment. I feel that it was different worlds, that there was no rec- I feel that any police interaction with the schools or with our kids has got to, has got to have some, show some awareness of this, which was lacking in that particular interview, presentation, and discussion that I watched. In this case, it was a bit worse because the SRO was the arresting officer and the investigating officer in the in the EHS incident. And that's got to have an impact on families. That's the negative encounter with the police to some people. Not a rush with the laws, as it's called. That's part of it. The other part is are they looking at, are you looking at how many black were choice out of our schools? Again, I know several and unfairly, no, I don't know all that many people. It's not a welcoming place. EPS only has one or two BIPOC teachers at all, which is known to be non-supportive to BIPOC students. I mean, there's been, I don't have them here, but there's been so many studies that that's not. I just think that EPD in this area needs serious education. They're showing a lack of understanding, a certain amount of ignorance. They need training to counter it just on the street, much less in the schools. And it does scare me to think of them continuing to swagger through the halls of our schools as well as people are saying to be called with this mentality, to be called to mental health crises, to be called to community needs. So I hear you, Counselor Gomez, about a structure that is long-lasting. You know, still around, replacements that are still around in ten or twenty years. But I would also ask that they
We lose her? Couldn't hear anything from her.
I can't hear anything either.
Yeah, I can not hear anything from her anymore.
Did Kay still want to speak or did Kay defer to time and then?
Kay?
Kay Collins.
Hey, Collins. I mean, we need change. Okay.
Okay, thank you. We, my name is Kay Collins, she/her pronouns. I'm a member of A Kind and I live at Carolab in East Hampton, also in Counselor Durbey's district. We are interested in the details, in getting details of the proposed alternatives to domestic violence response. There's mention in the report of reallocating funds to some community organizations. Currently, many existing domestic violence and sexual assault services receive federal and state funding that is tied specifically to partnerships with police. If there's going to be a city partnership, it shouldn't be dependent on solely diverting money to primarily grant-funded organizations. As Javier pointed out earlier, transitioning crisis response to community organizations that may not have gone through the type of certification that a formal city agency would require could potentially create liability issues for the city. There should be a department with a steady stream of city funding to support training and certification so that crisis response presents only as much liability as any other city employee doing their job. It would be an investment in the community and in the city to have a dedicated community crisis and harm reduction response department. And it's something that has the potential to change the culture of East Hampton for the better. And from a personal perspective, given my history as a domestic violence survivor who was not in a position where I felt that calling police would have increased my safety, I just want to say this, changes to community response should not involve initiatives to pair armed police with domestic violence specialists to respond to a crisis. Chief Alberti speaks a lot about the EPD's focus on community policing and sincerely wanting everyone in the city to feel safe to report crimes. But that doesn't take into account, as Javier said as well, that not everybody in the community has the same definition of safety when it comes to police response. There are frequent intersections between domestic violence and substance abuse. And there's disproportionate number of occurrences of undocumented communities not feeling like they can report assault. I know the chief has talked about the visas that are particularly meant for undocumented people who are reporting crimes. But I think there's a huge disconnect between the reality of that experience and and the knowledge that people have that that's even a thing. With unarmed peer-led support, there would be the option for people in crisis to call for help and resources without the involvement of police, particularly without the involvement of armed police. And that people unlikely to reach out for help should they feel that they are also at risk from calling the police or from police involvement would be more likely to call and to reach out for resources. And I really do, I would just like to say to you that I suggest that anybody who's talking, reading this report and having conversations about the report, come to the event that A Kind is hosting that Gabby mentioned on the 29th. Because I think, you know, having a conversation with people that are doing boots-on-the-ground work in peer-led crisis response is going to be an education for everybody so that we can further this conversation. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Okay. Anyone else? Myra?
Good evening. I hadn't planned on speaking, but something did come to my head, my mind, as I heard other people making comments, many for which I resonate with me. And I just wanted to go and circle back to the language, needing shared language. And as we're talking about alternatives, especially in regards to mental health and domestic violence, speak to the need to have respectful and up-to-date language that are used by and up to date language that are, that are used by our current first responders. There was an incident on my, that I believe played itself out on my, on my street um not so long ago, in which there were about three off, I think, three cruisers that blocked off the street or on various parts of a very small road. And uh, my neighbors were obviously concerned. They knew this gentleman that was being interacted with. And although I don't know the end result, when I did look at the log, the wording that was used was deranged person. And I don't believe that would be an adequate word to describe someone as being deranged. Um, and I think that commonality in terms of our language also needs to be addressed in terms by, by dispatch as well. I believe that's where um the use deranged would probably come from. And so I just wanted to speak to, to needing to have common language and language that doesn't seem to be disparaging, especially in regards to mental health calls, which I believe it would have been. Thank you.
Okay, Myra.
Myra, what precinct do you live in?
One.
One.
That's one.
And Louise, and Louise, where does she live, what precinct?
No idea.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. I didn't even introduce, yes, Myra precinct one. Thank you.
Jen?
Hello.
Hello.
Starting my video. Hi, so I'm Jen Markey. I uh live at forty five Ridgewood Terrace um in East Hampton. And I wanted to first of all, thank everyone who has spoken, both the people who worked on the report, um our city representatives and the folks that have done public speak. Um, I think that this is a really important conversation for us to be having. And I wanted to throw, uh, throw my own experience in there a little bit about um the concept of uh, as is recommended in the report, considering investment into existing community organizations such as um partnership with CSO or with um, so River Arts Collective. Um, and then also a little bit about how, give me one moment so that I can turn the volume off on this so that you guys don't have to keep hearing that. Sorry. Um, sorry. Uh, so how my own experience working in an organization that provided direct care funded by an agreement with the state. Um, and the sorts of pitfalls that we ran into in the hopes that those can be considered by the counselors who are here and everyone who is here. When we're looking at potential long term solutions and how to make sure that we don't, as Javier was saying, perpetuate the same stumbling blocks that these sorts of systems have run into time and time again. Um, so one of the major things that uh is important to consider in uh running a program that would provide unarmed response to uh crisis, uh especially behavioral health crisis, is adequate funding, training and staffing. Um, I know that the city and every city in the US is facing difficult choices around our budget. And any instance where we, you know, think we can find a way to save a little bit in the now feels like a urgent imperative. But investing in the sort of organization either in partnership with an external organization or housed in the city is going to involve a significant investment. And I would really encourage the um, the folks who are here, who are in charge of our budget to consider starting to make that investment as soon as possible and with full commitment rather than um simply putting a toe in the water. Uh, I used to work at an organization that provided direct care services in the community for uh people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And I found myself so frequently watching bright, caring people who really wanted to help be involved in the community and uh be skilled. Uh, assistance for people who were struggling with a disability that made them feel disconnected from the community. Um, only to find that the combination of extremely high expectations followed by poverty wages that led many of them to need to take on additional jobs on top of a full time job working in the community, doing something that can sometimes lead to really uh draining or traumatic experiences. Anytime someone is coping with a behavioral health crisis, it can be really intense for whoever is assisting them. I'm sure that the police officers who are on this call can speak to the crisis of mental health that also exists for anyone responding to a um behavioral health crisis. And when we underfund these resources and undertrain the people who are working at this work, we end up losing some of our best and brightest potential uh community members because it's not sustainable because of the burnout that comes from this sort of work. So I just really wanted to hammer down that doing a, a proper and complete look at what the city needs and really making sure that you meet and ideally exceed that uh, that minimum is going to yield the best results in the longer term as the city finds skilled people who are capable of doing this work in the long term. Um, I also would love to just recommend uh when thinking about this sort of thing, right? There's like the sense of like, well, how would that even work? Um, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration created what's called the natural, not natural, National Guidelines for Behavioral Health Crisis Care that goes over some things like how to calculate how much staffing you might need to provide 24 hour service in crisis care for behavioral health issues, which includes substance abuse, mental health, um and crisis in general. Uh, I would really recommend taking a look at that because definitely when you're faced with the question of like, how do we do this? Um, I don't want East Hampton to potentially overwhelm a already very strained support network for people who are struggling. Um, because we're too afraid to try and do it ourselves as a city, once we understand what's needed. So I wanted to recommend that resource, uh speak a little bit about the uh issue of burnout in this kind of uh direct care. And thank everyone again for their time. Uh, I hope that uh this brings up some interesting thoughts for folks as they're considering the future uh of these sorts of initiatives. Uh, okay.
Thank you, Jen. Stephen? I'm sorry if I pronounced that bad.
Yeah, Stephen. Yeah.
Stephen, perfect.
Um, thank you, everyone, uh, for being on tonight. Um, I'm just gonna read, uh, my name's Stephen Bryla. I'm a small business owner in town in East Hampton on Pleasant Street in one of the mill buildings, the Keystone Building. And I'm just gonna read a short prepared statement and then speak personally for about another minute. Um, if we want to focus the scope of law enforcement, then taking the war on drugs off their plate will be extremely effective. We know that a lot of homelessness, not all of it, is driven by addiction. We know that violent crime, also not all, is driven by mental health trauma. Access to these psychedelic plant therapies address the root causes of many of the problems we leave for law enforcement to deal with. Also, many officers themselves suffer from undiagnosed uh post traumatic stress disorder. Access to these psychedelic therapies could help that as well. There are officers from Winthrop that the Bay Saders are getting training to do just that. Again, let's focus on the root causes. The war on drugs and jailing people is not the wisest use of these resources. And then personally speaking for myself, um, these therapies have helped me deal with Simone uh my mental traumas and have gotten me off of alcohol to a place that I was able to um, you know, be a responsible enough human and citizen to then get my life together and open a business. My business is flotation therapy and um without getting into much of it, it's a meditation thing. Um, basically, I'm here to help people. And I feel like um after everyone, after whatever everyone has said tonight, I appreciate what the police um force is doing in this towns and I know it's not easy on them. And I just feel like taking non violent drug offenders um off the list of their large to do list would be extremely helpful. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is anyone from the public that is against any of, about this recommendation? We're gonna hear you too. No? Julie?
Hi, my name is Julie Thomas and I'm the precinct one. Um, I've heard a lot of different ideas that were put out by individuals. I also heard a lot of um negative responses towards our East Hampton PD. And I think that was unjustified. Um, I think that our East Hampton PD has been a model. Police department. They may not be perfect in every avenue in everybody's eyes. But as a whole, I appreciate what they do. And I think that we forget to embrace the good. We look at what's been happening in the nation and we deflect that a lot on our own police department. And it's unjust. Um, and I hope that people can come together instead of coming apart like I've been listening to on here. And I found it very disturbing. And I just hope that people can reach across and understand that most of our police officers, men and women and the chief, they are residents of our community. They are vested in our community just as much as you are. So when you turn on them, remember that they are part of our community. And I appreciate everything that they've always done. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else? Myra?
Again, Myra from precinct one. Um, I think I heard neighbors speak. And I think what I'd like to
before, before you talk, um, and I know
Very briefly.
Julie, yeah, I know. I'm gonna let you talk. But before I want to say this. I know Julie talked in favor of the police department and I um but she respectfully uh talked to the committee and I was expecting everybody else to, to talk to the committee and not to respond uh to the citizens. It's not about you, Myra. I just want to put that clear before someone else responds.
Yes, so I'll respectfully speak to the committee and just say um, I think comments that are made are in response um, in response to a movement about reimagining safety. And that, that these comments are made not at, not despite um, the current structures that are in place, not to diminish um or belittle occupations and professions nor um nor to make divisions among support or family members, but simply to imagine safety in a different way and hear other people's point of view. And just knowing that there are different points of view and we can respectfully commute, communicate them. And not to be disparaging to, to anyone but to hear each other out. And I think by hearing each other out, um, it's a way to to communicate, to build common language, to understand each other's point of views. And not being disparaging in doing that. Um, and I think that's mostly what I want to say in terms of common language divesting and reinvesting isn't a personal attack. It isn't an attack on our community. It's rather rethinking an ideology and rethinking systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Myra. Chat.
Thank you, counselor. I am Chad Alexander, lifelong resident precinct five, also a member of the police department. I just want to say, first and foremost, I'm very quite frankly disappointed in East Hampton tonight and everything I've heard so far. Uh, and I also want to preface with that I hold a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. I also have several uh classes in the psychology field and deal with a lot of these calls that we're talking about on a daily basis. Uh, the majority of our calls that we deal with regarding well being checks or mental health issues actually come from CSO or Service Net or doctors and they're the ones calling, looking for help and we're the ones that help them. Uh, I, I listened to several different people uh go through different uh scenarios. I heard Gabby say that she wants an alternative to policing four separate times. Um, and just invited us to our, her uh event Thursday, which I look forward to. That was plugged by uh Counselor Rothschild. I, I don't know of any alternatives to policing that she mentioned. She just mentioned that. I heard Carolyn say about nonprofits working more and more with less and less and talking about food delivery and internet for children. Again, nothing with the police. Natalie talks solely of wanting no police at all. Um, she said that uh the East Hampton police don't conform a lot of things. She forgot that we also uh have a coffee with a cop program monthly when there's no COVID. We have a cookout with a cop annually. We have lids for kids where we give kids hats and gloves in the cold weather. We have a national night out. We have officers volunteer with many youth sports in town. Uh, Louise talked about issues on the Jersey Turnpike and the Boston Police and SROs, she brought up a, a fight that happened four years ago where a juvenile kid was attacked and kids were arrested for it and not happy with it and talked of, she said a quote, that kid, our, our SRO swagger through the halls of schools. Uh, Kay doesn't want any armed officers going to domestic calls, which happened to be the most dangerous calls that we could go on. And quite frankly, it's, it's just disappointing, but I, I'm just gonna leave all you counselors with this, that uh, no one on this entire forum tonight shared any negative comments or encounters with any EPD police officer at all. They just have a general hate for police across the board. Not a single bad thing to say about the EPD. Uh, I, I would encourage any officer, or excuse me, any resident to come and sit and talk with any officer any day of the week. I work uh the day shift from eight to four and I welcome any of you to come in and sit with me. And we will talk about any issues that you're having. Um, because we're community members also. Like I said, I've been a taxpayer here my whole life. We all want to see the greater good for East Hampton, just like everybody else does. And to be attacked just because people dislike police officers in general is very unfair to your fellow community members that live right next door to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Um, before we keep going, I just want to be clear again with the rules. I just please um, we have something in the agenda is about the recommendation from the um, the major press group. I know is, is a hard topic to talk. Um, I'm not saying that it's easy, but I would please uh ask for respect. Uh, and respect everybody's opinion. Everybody have their point of view of, of anything. And one of the beauty of this country is the freedom of speech. I, I love this country about, because, because we, we can do so many stuff that no, in other countries we, we're allowed to do. And, and this is the, that's the beauty of this country. Uh, I, I just want to uh tell everybody to please respect uh everybody's opinion. And we can disagree. That's perfect. But again, I uh encourage you to talk to the committee. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Rothschild?
Hi, I just wanted to um, to say to Chad Alexander, I wasn't, I wasn't plugging anything. I'm actually taking minutes. So I was just re, I was questioning for the minutes, just so you know. I'm here to listen. I, I'm, I'm I'd like to talk about recommendation number one, to be honest, and like a lot of what I want to hear about is um the police, I'd like to hear from the police and um people who have mental health issues and I'd like to hear from the police and how, you know, just how the string of calls goes like that, like, you know, you usually get them from CSOs um, or Service Net. Um, what kind of support you would like? Um, what, just your thoughts on actually this recommendation? Um, I noticed on page seven of the report, it did say that fifteen, that we have a really high proportion of disabled living in East Hampton. Fifteen percent of people are living with a disability in the city of East Hampton. And I was, I was interested in how many of those are mental disabilities? Um, do we have a high proportion of people with um mental health, mental disabilities? I was, I was wondering if we have a higher proportion of calls related to mental health. I was just I'm kind of just wanna learn about how this affects the people that work here and the people that live here. And then think about how we might be able to, as a community, address it, address mental health better. So that's what I'm really interested in tonight.
Thank you. I just wanna, I just wanna be super clear. The recommendation, the the at the end, we're gonna make as a committee is to make our our city safer. In one way or the other. Helping our community is is our goal. Keep it safe is our goal. And keep it safe with with the police or other programs is our goal. At the end, we we're gonna recommend what what we think. And what we believe with data is gonna be the better for the for our for our community and 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 the city. Liz.
Hi, my name is Liz. I live in Ward three. And I just wanted to share with the committee a story about an incident that occurred to me with the Northampton Police. Back in two thousand and six, I lived in a two-story apartment with my partner at the time. I came home from work and he was intoxicated and he fell down the flight of stairs. We thought that he broke his foot. Not knowing that the police department has to respond to any nine-one-one call, I called nine-one-one looking for an ambulance. The officer that arrived was actually a narcotics detective. He showed up because he heard the address of my apartment building. And my downstairs neighbor at the time was suspected of selling cannabis. So he was trying to have an excuse to go into their apartment to search. When he was denied that that right to get into their apartment. He came up to our apartment long before the EMT arrived. Saw my intoxicated husband, was very agitated because there was a waste of his time. Said he was going to put my husband into PC protective custody. When I argued with him that you can't protect if custody somebody out of their own apartment, he got more agitated. Then a fight broke out. The his mace was deployed in our apartment. And my partner was hauled off by the police and didn't receive the medical treatment that we were seeking. And to this day, I just kind of wonder how that call would have gone had a police officer not responded to somebody in the need of medical assistance for breaking their foot. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Ms. Redd.
Hi, my name's Desiree Greby. I live in precinct five. I just wanted to kind of go back to the recommendations that you guys are speaking of of kind of the all hands on approach and getting more assistance. I guess my understanding and listening to kind of dispatch and listening to the radio is you know, nine times out of ten, we don't even know what the call would be. We don't know what police officers are actually responding to. And they almost act like a middleman sometimes where they can show up and find out what is going on and then, you know, get the appropriate party that needs to be involved to assist that what needs to be done. I guess when taking stuff off their plate, I officer is gonna argue with that one. But how? I guess, is there any, how do we know which ones go to where? How do you know when you should send somebody that is a police officer versus when you should send somebody that is just a counselor versus when you should send a community member to assist? I mean, again, sometimes the phone calls are very brief when they go into dispatches what is needed. So you know, how are you gonna decipher what is needed at the time without sending a middle person there to figure it out?
Thank you. That's a great point. Thank you. Anyone else? No. Chief, I know you are still here and I know Officer Greby. I I think I saw him before. I don't know if he if he's still on the call. I don't know if you wanna make any comment about the recommendation.
I do. Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate the opportunity. I was biding my time waiting to be called upon, counselor. So I appreciate this. What else say? I got a couple, couple of comments. But what I wanna say is one thing that was not quoted in the paper recently that I was insistent upon they put in the paper. And that was that the East Hampton Police Department remains committed to working with community leaders, advocates and elected officials to improve policing through enhancing trust and transparency. With that, we appreciate the opportunity that we had and the collaboration and cooperation on this project. I assign Sergeant Kyle Greby to this solely. We appreciate Nicole Hendricks's work. They work really well together. Matter of fact, Kyle was one of Nicole's students. So it was a real good fit and a real good match. There's obviously there's much work to be done. We're happy to be involved in this. You know, I was been, I've been making notes right along. We do work with CSO and ServiceNet. We get frustrated with them periodically because we've had mental health crisis calls where they basically told us there's nothing more we can do and the person's in crisis and, you know, see if you can call family members. So as frustrated as we are with some of these calls that they think, you know, people are better equipped to handle. The professionals kind of hang us out the dry more often than not. So I think that's 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 an important piece to Desiree's point, triaging calls sometimes is not as simplistic as somebody calls nine-one-one and arbitrarily is a mental health issue. So we're just gonna send, you know, a mental health unarmed person. Because we don't even know what that is or in as much as we try to extrapolate from the caller, it's very, very difficult to really know what we're getting ourselves into. But I do, I I guess getting back to the recommendation. I'm familiar with cahoots. Nicole Hendricks and I have talked about this at length. I think the with this particular recommendation, I think the regional approach would be best. And we've talked about this with other area departments. So I think getting a regional approach of this off the ground and really nailing down what it looks like. What kind of calls are they gonna go on? Is it gonna be if somebody's in crisis and doesn't want a police officer but wants to talk to a clinician that, you know, or they want a clinician at their house? I think we just gotta kind of bore down into the logistics of what the what does that really look like? It's really triaging at that point. I'd really like to know more about the Domestic Violence Response Crisis and Harm Reduction Task Force. And what that looks like to to Chad Alexander's point. Across the country, the domestic violence calls are the most dangerous calls for police officers to respond to. And we could come up with plenty of data that shows how many police officers get killed at those kinds of calls. So I'd be interested to see what what that looks like. But I and I truly do appreciate the work that Nicole and Kyle did and Rick Riegowski from my 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 data collection team. We've had some difficulties with our data collection system and our RMS, our record management system. It's very, very old. But it's intertwined with almost every single police department in the Commonwealth for information sharing. So we've got some ideas on how to extrapolate more specific data. So we're working towards that now. And then I guess the last thing with regard to mental health, and I'll say this, and I said this to Counselor Rothschild during one of our meetings, we've talked about this. We're not mental health experts. You know, we don't have degrees in mental health. We certainly have mental health first aid training and awareness. A hundred percent of my department does. And we and we did that for the IACP One Mind Campaign. It's worthy, looking that up. Twenty percent of our officers are trained in crisis response training and we're always trying to improve on that. That's a forty hour course, but twenty percent of my officers have taken that course. But what I was getting to with my conversations with Counselor Rothschild and Counselor Coniff. I believe we have five ServiceNet homes in East Hampton. And those ServiceNet homes are staffed with mental health experts, experts in their field. They have degrees in psychology. They have degrees in in mental health. They are the experts. And I can tell you more often than not, they call us. We respond to those ServiceNet houses because the mental health experts need help. So again, I think the regional approach like a cahoots program, but I think we gotta be cognizant of and and know that I think it's important that I say that the mental health experts in these ServiceNet homes are calling upon us regularly to help them out. And with that, I'm open to any questions. Counselor Gomez, whatever you need from me and our police department and Nicole Hendricks and the mayor, you all know that we're in this for the long run and, you know, the police are the community and the community is the police. And we are, we, most of us do live here and we have a vest, we're vested in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Madam President.
Hi, thank you, Counselor Gomez. I just wanted to weigh in as a, you know, kind of a city counselor and to run my experience and my thoughts around this report as it stands today. So last summer, my brother-in-law had a mental health crisis. And, you know, I say this fully cognizant of the fact that I am white. And that my experience is probably better than others. But what happened with the crisis that occurred at my home was I mean, the police did a great job, but more importantly, what it typified to me was that they should not have been there. And my my brother-in-law doesn't need to see someone coming at him who has a gun on their waist because he's been in jail. And it's frightening and he doesn't understand it because of his mental health issues. Everything was handled flawlessly. But it could have been different had it been handled by someone without a gun. And I think the chief will acknowledge that he was pretty wigged out and very disturbed. But given all of that, when I say the thought of moving those kinds of calls to a mental health functioning group, which I am all for, I am concerned because my brother-in-law is in ServiceNet. They are woefully under-resourced. We had to find him a COVID vaccine ourselves. Because they, when we asked them, they were like, gee, I don't know. We're not doing anything with that. And that was disturbing. So when we talk about moving things to mental health, we better darn well be sure mental health is ready to get them. And I I feel like mental health resources in all of Western Massachusetts are very much underfunded, understaffed, underdeveloped. There's nobody out there that we can call. So if we move in that direction, please, let's make sure that it is, to someone else's point, funded for the long run and that we don't start tomorrow. Let's think about this. Let's get a plan in place. Let's make sure that the the facilities, and I I like the idea of a regional approach because we could never afford a city approach. If we get a regional approach, you will have and be certain that Cooley Dickinson, all the respite houses, all the group homes, any place where there is a place to put these folks is available and in coordination with what you're doing. Because if there is no available spots, then it's kind of pointless and it can exacerbate an already difficult situation. So all I ask this committee to consider is that if we move into a mental health support model, that we are certain that it can stand up, that it's resource and that all of the regional resources and housing and hospitals share the information about the beds that they have available on any given day to put individuals there if that is the answer. Because without all of that coordination, this is just a lovely conversation and we all can feel good about having these opinions. But if we're gonna put this into a model, we really have to go long run on this and get all the hospitals involved, all of the mental health facilities involved. Otherwise, we will fail. And yeah, I guess that's all I wanted to say. So we can talk more about this as we move through this, but that is something that I'm very a huge advocate of. But I also don't want it to happen in the next two months. I don't, I think that would fail. And so think long run. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Gomez, if I may for two seconds.
Sure, chief.
I just wanna piggyback on what Counselor Coniff was just speaking to. What she just described is the reason why all of our mental health calls for the police department are have been skyrocketing for years is exactly what she just described. So I couldn't agree with her more that we gotta really vet this out thorough plan regionally and make sure that the support services are gonna be able to take the burden from the police department. One last thing, if anybody is interested in doing any ride-alongs and coming to our station, by all means, please get in contact with us. We'll be happy to take you out.
Thank you, chief. I don't see anyone else. It's gonna be almost two hours talking and listening here. Before we go, I wanna answer a few questions that people brought. I know it's not part of the agenda, but I'm gonna throw it there because there's no deliberation. It's just gonna, you're just gonna answer. The SRO situation is gonna be at the school committee. I'm pretty sure they're gonna have, it's gonna be a report from another group that is not related to us. And it's gonna be, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be at the next school committee. They're gonna talk about that. So but wouldn't have anything. And we're not involved with that decision or any decision with the SRO. About the video that we, by the way, I was part of it, that the police department did last week. Basically, it's sending a message out there that doesn't matter what language you you speak. Feel feel comfortable to talk to then call a nine-one-one. The the our police department have, not just their police department, the public safety complex have the ability to answer in any language that that you speak. So if you see anything in our community, any emergency in our community, feel, please feel comfortable and free to talk to the to the public safety complex because they have the equipment to answer at in any language. That's the only two things that I got. I take a lot of notes from this this meeting. I'm planning to, again, I'm planning to have a multiple meetings. In our next meeting, I'm planning to talk about recommendation two and three. If Counselor Rochelle and Derby want it. But that's 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 the plan that I want so that we can do like a three to four meetings and then sit down and do the report for the full city council. Counselor Derby.
Thanks. So my mission was complete. I listened and and, you know, honestly, I I just appreciate everybody's comments, you know, no matter how you feel about this recommendation, number one. You know, I I think that from my perspective, this is, this is a complicated issue. And 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 Bob knows, you know, like when everything went down at DHS, that really upset me because those boys were like my, like my sons. And and we talked about that issue a lot. And and I gotta be completely honest, you know, I've been so impressed with Bob's ability to you know, reflect and to adapt. And and so I appreciate that. And I appreciate the work that East Hampton Police has done. You know, and and as people were talking about, you know, the decriminalization issue, I couldn't agree more, honestly. You know, I mean, there's been a lot of damage done in the with the war on drugs and 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 it's unfortunate. Because, you know, our police officers were were doing what they were told to do for for years. And and it just happened to be, you know, something that was counterproductive to developing a good relationship with the community and something that was counterproductive to having a thriving community in general. You know, you can't put millions of people in jail and expect good things to happen. And and so, you know, as I look at this, I I Um, and and so, you know, as I look at this, I I wanted, I wanted, as as far as looking at solutions, I I think a regional approach needs to happen. I think the partnerships with community support options with ServiceNet are absolutely crucial. Um, I think more training for our police officers, and I mean, they have a robust professional development. I would love to see more of that. I would love to see someone in-house that could help respond to these emergencies that does not necessarily have to carry a gun. Um, and I would love to see, um, you know, I I don't, I think, and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think there used to be something called STARS. I I think it was like a drug task force in in Western Mass. And basically, I I I don't really know anything about it, other than there was a drug task force that was involved with the the DEA and and, you know, other agencies. And I would love to see an approach like that. I I think that part of our, um, and and not that that, you know, I think that the DEA and 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 those drug task forces were doing a a productive thing. But I think like that idea of having a task force that can be a regional approach that has money coming from different areas uh is is something that we should be looking at as it relates to this. Um, because, you know, it's like, uh, drug drug busts are probably more interesting because you get to seize property and you get to like take pictures of the stuff that, you know, you seized. Uh, and it's and you get to keep it. Um, this is less glamorous as we talk about mental health issues. I mean, these are, you know, people at pretty uh low points or or families in crisis. And and that's hard and that's stressful. And so I I want to see our officers be able to have, you know, a a lighter load to be able to focus on the things that they want to be doing. And I would like to see them have more resources to be able to respond effectively to these situations. Um, and and I feel like that it should be like our our mission is to try to figure that equation out. So that's what I got from listening.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rothschild, anything?
Um, no, nothing to say. I just, you know, I I just know this come, the context of all these conversations comes in a lot of a lot of them, a lot of feelings, a lot of emotions, a lot of lived experience. And I think, you know, it's hard. And if I I just would hope that when people hear you know, discussions of an institution, that it's it's not about individual people. I appreciate the work that our police do. And I also understand the lived, I don't, I haven't, I don't have the same a lived experience, but I I I understand that people have a lived experience that makes the institution of policing very scary. But that doesn't, so we we need to be able to hold all that and be able to just what I mean, I'm really excited about this report and I I just feel like we're a small town. We're all communities and we're all in the same community. We should be able to talk to each other and and like do some cool stuff to make our city feel better and safer for everybody and without um deriding people or, you know, like Myra said earlier, diminishing anyone's profession or making people feel unappreciated. So um, I'm just, I thank you everyone for showing up. And this is not easy, but this is the first step. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. We're going to end soon, but I want to say a few things before. The first one is changes are are not always easy. There are none. Um, I just want to be clear, the intent of the, because I was part of the Major's Flash Group. I just want to clear with the intent of the first for the first recommendation. The intent basically is to free up the police resources by delegating some current police responsibilities. So that way, um, the police can respond for violence incidents instead of the non-violence incidents. To the other government departments, community-based organization and community as a whole, increase awareness and use existing capacity in the community to address issues currently delegated to the police. Any Sampton government response to health and safety rooted into the concert of a broad spectrum of community members and increase attention to the role and it impact of the police in East Hampton. Basically, is that the intent of the first recommendation? I just want to put that in the Counselor's head again and everybody's head. This committee is, I just want to be clear, we know against the police department. But we are in favor of having a safer community, a hundred percent. And we're going to do everything we we can and we to make that possible. I just want to say thanks again to everybody who was part of this meeting, who talk in favor, who give us their life experience. That's that was amazing to us, to listen all that. Thank you for the police department to for being here. Thank you for the chief of work for being here. And we're going to keep uh working on it. We're going to have a more meetings to keep talking about this. It's not easy. It's a lot of stuff to do. It's a lot of wor- a lot of work to do and it's going to be a hard way to find out the best solution. Yeah, but that's why we are here. All right? Anything else? Yes, now you want, you want to schedule the next meeting now?
Yes.
We how soon you guys are available?
How soon? Do you want to keep it on Mondays or?
We can, if we can explore other days, that would be better for me. Like Tuesday or Thursday would be ideal.
You want to do the Thursday, May sixth?
Uh, I could do, yeah, I can do Thursday, May sixth. Yeah.
That works.
Okay.
May sixth is going to be our next meeting. Everybody is invited to the meeting. We're going to be talking about recommendations two and three. And please join us at May sixth. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Counselor Derby.
Aye.
Counselor Rothschild.
Hi.
And I say yes, so have a great night, everybody.
Bye.
Take care.